Okay, at this time I'll call the August eleventh, twenty twenty five council meeting to order. Please rise for the legal.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none heard. Consent agenda, I don't see anybody for any public forum tonight.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion, will you, a second?
Second, and I'd like to pull item F, please.
Any others being pulled? Prove the consent agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item F.
Item F is a approval of posting a request for a proposal of facility needs study. I'd like more information on that. What exactly are they, are, is the city thinking of for our facility needs? And, and why can't our staff do this? So those are my two questions.
So Mr. Mayor and Council, the facility needs is basically a professional that would come in, would identify the age of the facility, age of the roof, age of bathrooms, age of everything. And they all have kind of a end of life at some point, whatever that timeframe is, and they identify that. Then they kind of determine, okay, this is based on population growth, where you might want to go for a fire stations or for a public works facilities, or, you know, you name it. Again, it's a study that, that doesn't commit the city to anything, but it's somewhat of a roadmap that helps the city identify possible future needs. And if, if it's the direction the council wants to go, then you can start with Mike and start preparing for those future needs from a financial standpoint so that ten years from now, you don't have zero dollars in the bank to start paying for maybe a new fire station or something like that. We have a, we have a, you know, possible need for a new fire station, but this would kind of identify maybe what year that would fall into based on population growth and calls and that sort of thing. So they take into account a lot of criteria that quite honestly, staff would not be necessarily competent maybe to come up with that information. It's not that we can't come up with something, I just don't know that we would trust what we would come up with versus what they would come up with from a professional perspective.
Well, I just don't think it's feasible or necessary to pay somebody to do something like this because in my mind, okay, I think we do need a new fire station, I think we do need a new maintenance facility. So I think we need those things, but I don't think we can pay for them right now because we don't have that money set aside. So why wouldn't we just start setting aside money for it now? Because instead of paying somebody some money, some of that money that we could put in that pot instead of, you know what I'm saying?
First of all, let me clarify, this is just to go out for an RFP to get an understanding of what a study might cost. And at that point, you guys can decide if you want to, you might be a step ahead of where we're, we're trying to get to. So once this RFP comes back, you can decide, that's too expensive, we don't want to do that. Or that seems reasonable, you know, we would like to go ahead with that. That's a decision you can make later. But it will also kind of say, okay, this is kind of the size of a public works facility you might need. Right now, we wouldn't know, we'd be shooting in the dark, you know, do you double the one you have? Do you, you know, it's tough to say based on need. But they have experience kind of working with other communities and other facilities and things like that to make those recommendations. Again, it's, it's only on paper at this point, it's not committing anybody to anything. And this isn't committing us to anything financially, it's just getting an idea of what the scope, you know, the cost for that scope of work would be.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll make a motion to approve item F and the consent agenda.
Second. Motion and second, but we have further discussion. What facilities are we looking at?
Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, I think, as mentioned, we'd be looking at a fire station, we'd be looking at public works. They would identify, you know, City Hall potentially, they would be, you know, they'd be looking at the age of the community center, would that need replacement at some point down the road, you know? All the, you know, I don't know that we would have any other facilities besides that. But the most important part is you get an understanding of where your current facilities are, how much longer that building is going to last at public works, when you'd need to replace something like that. And that gives you the ability to, to plan out, you know, years in advance for something like that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I can get this straight, so the points that Susan made, we're not paying for anything at all yet, we're getting quotes to do this?
This is just authorizing to go out for an RFP.
But in order to authorize it, we kind of need to know exactly what it's going to cost, that's correct. So we'd have control over that before anything is done, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to be.
So an RFP comes back, you get to decide, this looks good, we want to do this, or we don't want to do this, you know? So depending on what the cost is, I don't, I mean, it could come in at five thousand dollars, it could come in at twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
You know?
Shouldn't the community center up at Whispering be included in this? Being we're already repairing generators up there and who knows what will we have, ending up doing with the water?
Well, it's gonna, it's.
With the water system.
Yeah, it's going to include all of our facilities.
Okay.
And then future need, which could be anything at that point, I mean, that's blue sky.
Verify it was covering everything, I mean.
I got a question too, is do we have anybody that maintains our buildings and looks at different things? Because preventative maintenance can go a long ways if we're paying attention to what's going on with our buildings.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor and Council, Nate is kind of in charge of that. So if we have any sort of issues with, with our facilities, we call him, he has, you know, our, our public works guys are skilled in some of this work and some other areas they're not. For example, we replaced an HVAC system on the roof here. They weren't able to repair that or knew how to repair it. We called in a professional group and they, they determined that, you know, here's a cost to repair it, here's a cost for new, and it just made sense to do new. And, but for, you know, simple fixes and things like that, you know, caulking joints or whatever's needed.
So you hold the need.
Yeah, they do that type of work, so. We do save a substantial amount of money doing that, yeah.
Is it our staff that's going to identify these areas that need to be looked at, or is it?
You know, I, I think that if you vote for a, a study like this, they'll contact staff, they'll interview staff, they'll try and determine, okay, what, what, you know, what are your feelings on this too? They'll kind of take the whole, everything into account. They'll walk the facilities, you know, they'll take into account the, the years they were built, you know? Everything has a lifespan to it, so. When were the roofs replaced last, you know? When, when should they be anticipated to replace, you know, that sort of thing, so. It's, it's just really a roadmap that kind of, as of this point in time, gives us information going forward, which is, can be valuable.
Kind of like a comprehensive plan of the buildings.
Right, facilities, yep.
Pretty much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, unheard. Item E G.
I'll be abstaining from this item.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, on July twenty-eighth, we brought forward the BDM lease agreement. And it was an oversight on my part that I, that I did not send that document to the, the principal. And so we brought it back to this meeting now. I received a phone call, I'm sorry, a text rather, at three forty-five, I think it was. Three twenty-five, saying that changes are needed, when the changes have been completed, the document will be sent to the City of East Bethel, Brian Mundell, Manager, Firebird Land LLC. So we did send this information off to Brian Mundell Senior. And, and he received that, and as far as the changes are concerned, there was, there was council member Miller and council, and yourself, Mr. Mayor, who were part of that discussion. And perhaps either one of you can speak to the content of, of that discussion that we had. But essentially, you know, we walked away with, you know, BDM paying three hundred dollars monthly for the share of electricity, internet, water, sewer, and other expenses that would fall into the category of common area maintenance, as well as a placement of the business sign. Both parties would consider the road improvement deficiency would be satisfied through the application of interest that was generated out the original one point seven million purchase price in addition to these installments made by the development, developer rather, and interest generated off the two thousand dollar payments per permit issue issued. The city agrees to not pursue past taxes that should have been paid on the portion of city property that was used for commercial purposes, and the city agrees to the amount of six thousand dollar SAC fee and five hundred dollar WAC fee as defined by the contract. The contract just kind of said, I'll, I'll read the last one here. BDM will then vacate the property in three years from the signing of the agreement or renegotiate a suitable agreement with the city. Going back to the SAC and WAC, when this contract was put together in two thousand four, the city did both SAC and WAC at that time. And since that contract then, the city got involved with the Met Council, put in the Met Council system, and the city right now, as of today, does not have any SAC responsibilities, right? I mean, that, we do charge for that, but it goes through, you know, as far as the Met Council side of SAC hookup, we just pass along what their cost is on that. The city charges generally three thousand, the Met Council was at three thousand, kind of where that six thousand came from. Today, the Met Council is thirty-two fifty, I think it is, or thirty-three some hundred dollars. We don't control that price. If they came tomorrow and said it's five thousand dollars, we don't control that, we have to pass that on. This contract never took that into account, so it was never revised to change the city from SAC and WAC to now Met Council SAC and WAC, and we pass on that, that amount. So by way of this contract, the way it reads, it said that each, you know, parcel would pay six thousand in SAC and five hundred in WAC, and away you go. And, and so according to the contract, I, you know, we felt that was probably necessary that while some of those numbers were all over the board in the past, if you pull up a history of it, that we should probably go back to what this contract is, because that's the essence of this, this conversation we're having, is we have a contract, we need to follow the contract. Whatever is written, whatever isn't written, needs to be followed. And so essentially, I, I don't know what changes is, you know, again, we received it as, at three forty-five today, we, we don't have a list of what these additional changes need to be. But fundamentally, it's, I'm not sure of these five or six, what, what else we didn't, you know, put on here or should have put on here. I believe that was all that we agreed to on the handshake agreement following that meeting, so.
So I got a question, I guess, I wasn't involved with the negotiation on that part. I know Mr. Miller and our mayor was there and yourself. So the way I understood it, that at the end of the meeting, it seemed like it was an agreement. I mean, when I read this thing the first time, I was mad as hell. I mean, it's like three hundred dollars a month, come on. Twenty-one years of not paying nothing, and then a measly little three hundred, that's my opinion. But at that meeting that you guys had, wasn't there an agreement at the end that you actually shook hands? Mr. Mayor, did you do that?
We had a verbal agreement.
You didn't shake hands?
To move forward and with the draft and everything and get all parties to sign up so that we can present.
Okay, but I mean, did you shake hands on it?
No, it was just a verbal agreement.
Okay, Mr. Miller, did you guys, did you shake hands?
I shook hands.
You did, okay. Matt?
And he said, put this behind us and move on and so forth.
Yeah, that's correct.
So now, all of a sudden, now there's going to be more changes. In, in my opinion, what I see with this whole thing is that we're being played. That's my opinion, it's like, if you have an agreement, a handshake to me, years ago, used to mean something. Obviously, it must not now. But it's like we're being played and stuff is being stretched out. I mean, the first of August is here, no payment, of course, and now with this, no payment. And now we're supposed to wait for some other changes, which I've read this thing three, four times, which I don't agree with the majority of it, but in order to get it done, get it done. But now it's going to stretch on again. So my personal feeling is we're being played on this whole thing. And it's just like, when I brought up at the April twenty-eighth meeting, after I found out that city administrator Mundell Senior, Mundell Junior, had a meeting on all this. And I remember at the twenty-eighth of April meeting, I asked Mundell Junior, what position was he in for the residents or for the business? And I got no answer. Seeing, in my opinion, seeing what's going on right now, personally, he's not for the residents of East Bethel. This shouldn't be.
Jim, I abstained. You asked me a question, I abstained, I'm still abstaining.
You always chirp in though, at your convenience.
No, you asked me a question while I was abstaining, I said I'm abstaining.
How many times have you abstained and then opened your mouth again?
Have I avoided anything while I abstained?
Yes. Yes, you have.
No.
Yes, you have.
Present it.
Present it. I'll look up the dates, no problem, because you've done it. So like I was saying, this, in my opinion, we're being misled big time. It's costing the residents of East Bethel hundreds of thousands of dollars the way this has been handled. So I don't agree with none of this. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to evict BDM Construction, Firebird Land LLC out of our city-owned building and be done with this.
We have a motion, or a second?
Before I second something like this, I'd like to say something, if I could, Jim. We went in with good faith to negotiate, I don't know how many times, but this last one was two and a half hours. We went in to try and get this city's tax dollars and protect the city's tax residents, taxpaying residents from covering these bills. Was it the amount we wanted? No, it was negotiated to the point where we agreed that this would cover the basics, what was needed, so we were not in violation of any statutes for using taxpayers' dollars. I am extremely disappointed right now that this is being done to the city. I, I thought we had turned the corner with this, and I agree with Jim right now. This, this seems to be a game, it seems to be a game that keeps being played out at our expense. It's, it's unacceptable, it's unacceptable for the city to do business like this and keep being put in a position where we have no control over somebody in our own building, for God's sake. Okay, this is our city's building, this is our city's tax dollars. No matter how you look at it, when the bills come for that building, portion of that being used has been used by a private business. We thought we had an end to this, two weeks ago, we were told, nobody saw the paperwork, even though it's, it's posted on a Friday. It's been out there for two more weeks, and a couple hours before tonight's meeting, we don't have an agreement? I like to say, if, if they don't sign this thing, we have no choice. And I will agree, Jim, we have no choice. If, if they don't, if, if they don't sign it as it was, because this is the way it was, this is, this was the deal. So I'm going to second Jim's motion based on the actions of, of what happened today. Because we cannot be held as a city like this any longer. We tried to do the right thing, we tried to make it fair. Three hundred dollars to cover the expenses for any developmental company is so fair, it's not even funny. And, and to just keep dinking around with us and say we have to change this or change that, we need to stay in charge, we need to become in charge, and we need to take charge of our taxpayers' dollars, and we can't, we can't do this anymore. So I'm going to second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'd like to bring up the point that the letter of intent that we sent to Mr. Mundell, which went out to him via email on the twenty-ninth, right in that letter, it states twenty days. If you go twenty days from the twenty-ninth, that's a week from today, that he has the right to respond. And this is our legal letter that was sent to him.
I didn't know that.
Yes, it says right there, it's right in the deal, twenty days.
Why do we not have a copy of this legal letter? How do you have a copy of it and the rest of the council doesn't, we have no knowledge of this?
This letter's right here, deal.
Never seen it.
I didn't see it in mine.
Yes, it's on page thirty-seven.
Tonight's agenda?
Yep. Page thirty-seven, it's a second to the last paragraph on page thirty-eight, actually.
Page thirty-eight?
Yeah. Keep going. Right here. Paragraph right there.
Did not see that. So we have ten more days?
Actually, if you go from the twenty-ninth, when she, when he received it via email after our discussion at the meeting that night that he hadn't received it, he has till the eighteenth legally, or binding, I would say.
Where's the send date on this? Until July twenty-fifth or July twenty-eighth?
It's documented on the twenty-fifth, but we brought up at the meeting that night, twenty-eighth, I hadn't received it yet. So Mr. Look and Staff sent out to him on the twenty-ninth, the next day, I believe, right now.
I did. And Mr. Mayor and Council, I think, you know, part of the confusion was the July twenty-five, fifth, via email communication that's on there. Evidently, wires got crossed, it did not go out on the twenty-fifth. So we did send on the twenty-ninth, and the twenty days is correct. However, given the, the message I got this morning, or I'm sorry, this afternoon at three twenty-five, this won't even be accurate anymore, given whatever changes are proposed.
No, I agree with that, I'm just saying that.
So even after twenty days, given whatever changes they have, they can't agree to this because they, they don't agree with some, for some reason, based on a change they want to make.
Yeah, but a non-binding agreement is an agreement between both parties. And once it's drafted, both parties need to sign it too.
Right.
I, I'm just trying to keep us legal here.
Mr. Mayor and Council, obviously, if, if this was agreeable to Mr. Mundell Senior, twenty days, he can sign anywhere in between there, and this council meeting today would have been appropriate for that. That's why we had it on the agenda. We don't have another council meeting within that twenty-day window. So we would have approved it past the twenty days, but from, from a calendar standpoint. But regardless, it's, it sounds like based on their position, it will be a forced expiration and then a reissue, which will mean more legal, more cost involved in redrafting whatever. I, I'm assuming he's working with his attorney on this, that's, that's my assumption.
I would assume he would, I would if I was.
Right, and then, and then whatever they come back to us with, we'll have our attorney review to make sure that it's within our best interest.
I know.
And it may go back and forth three or four iterations before we land on what we ultimately handshake on that day.
The way I look at it is that you got your text message at three twenty-five today, basically saying, this is not what he's agreeing to.
To some degree.
Right, so I mean, the changes or whatever, this has been drafted with the agreement between you guys' meeting and him, but now he's not agreeing. So, I mean, the twenty days, that's never going to change, because he's already saying no to what you have.
Well, it could be, he's still in agreement, it's just in some of the verbiage that's in what we've written back to him, I don't know.
Right, but he says there's going to be some changes, so he's not in agreement with what's written here.
Mr. Attorney, how do we adjust this?
Yeah.
So we're not just going back and forth a hundred times and this fades away like it always does?
Yeah.
Okay, this, this needs to come to a conclusion, okay? And it, it's, if we're waiting to the last hour to get notes like this, there's got to be some seriousness now, okay? We mean business as a city, and I understand he wants a, a contract that he's in control of and writing again, okay? When you agree to something, how are we not, okay? How are we finding ourselves behind an eight ball constantly with this when, when we shouldn't be? When we have a, a verbal agreement and a handshake, how do we make a motion that says, listen, this has got to end, this going back and forth? I mean, when we agree on something, we agree on something, and, and let's do it. I mean, I, I'm tired of sitting up here and talking about this. I'm tired of bothering you, and just the residents have got to be getting sick of this. But this keeps coming up year after year after year, and we never have a resolution to it. Now we finally have a resolution, it's not the greatest, but it's something that covers the taxpayers, okay? It means we're not, the taxpayers are not paying anymore for this, and now here another month goes by, all right? What can we say? Say, listen, this has got to be done or else. I mean, we don't want to play this game anymore, I mean, I, I don't want to play this, I don't think the city wants to play this, and I certainly don't want to use anybody's money anymore. So how do we come to this conclusion? How do we end this?
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, you know, at this point, the LOI is part of a negotiation process, and it's clear that we're still in that process, it might be breaking down. You know, as we've discussed, there's still more time for BDM to respond with whatever their changes are. It doesn't get to the point of your question. You know, ultimately, we're stuck maneuvering with the agreement that currently exists, that everyone agrees is poorly drafted and is ambiguous about some terms, and no one is really quite sure about where either party stands if the chips were to fall on the floor. That said, you know, I think the city is taking the right steps to negotiate a solution here. As you've discussed, as Mr. Mayor articulated, we don't really know what the objections are at this point from BDM. They could be superficial, it could be turns of phrase or, or language, but the changes could be material too, we, we don't know. And I think that, at least I have heard your message loud and clear, and anyone listening has heard it loud and clear, that you don't want to be playing games about this anymore and you're seeking finality, and in any negotiation, at some point, the negotiating stops. That's maybe the best answer I can give you on, on where does this go, what do we do about it? Because right now, there is an operative agreement, and we're working under it as best as we all understand and can, and we're seeking to revise it and resolve it.
Mr. Mayor and Council and City Attorney Softly, would, would it be advantageous to, in the motion that's currently on the table, and second, it would be advantageous to have a friendly amendment that says, if this isn't resolved by the nineteenth, that goes into effect the eviction? if this isn't resolved by the nineteenth, it goes into effect, the eviction? I believe eighteenth is the twenty days.
Yeah, eighteenth would be the twenty.
Yeah.
I wanna get this resolved as much as anybody else, too. I mean, it's, it's.
Glad you caught that, though, Mayor, I didn't see that.
Yeah, it, I, you know, it doesn't benefit the city at all until we get this resolved. So, I just wanna make sure we're doing it by just cause and not getting hung out here.
So.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Mr. Look, to your, to your question, you know, the city can take the eviction action if, if that's what it wants to do. We put deadlines in agreements for a couple reasons, one is to, to pressure towards an agreement, but the second is also to make sure that agreements end, so that if they are forgotten about or just dropped off the table, they just go away, and we don't have to worry about it being effective. So there's kind of a double purpose there. Enforcing the termination language and springing an eviction action on the tail end of that is a clear signal to the other party about what you are intending to do and the steps you're gonna take.
So can I add to my motion, then, that the deadline's August eighteenth, twenty-twenty-five, that this needs to be signed, or we're going forward with the eviction?
You certainly can make that amendment. Practically speaking, the question is, what if they come back with a change that is different? What does that do to your ultimatum? We would have to come back and discuss that at the next meeting, as to what to do with it. So, so it's not that there is.
Or we can call a special meeting.
You can always call a special meeting.
Because we need to get this done. I agree with what Tim says, too. Just keep stretching on and stretching on.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Smith, I would make it the nineteenth, since it goes through the eighteenth. So there's no question as to, I had the eighteenth or whatever, to still decide. If you want to decide.
Yeah, we, we need resolution. We had a deal, now we don't have a deal. I'm okay with that, you know, I didn't see that either in there.
Neither did I.
Thank you, Mayor, but we need to do this properly for the city, we need to give everyone enough time, obviously. But I'm disappointed that this is coming through at the last minute, just before a meeting, when it had more than opportunity that, ahead of time, that this could have been taken off the agenda totally.
Right.
No, I agree.
So then I guess I'll add to my motion, there's a deadline of August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, that this needs to be signed by both parties, or we start the eviction process. Is that all right, to do it that way? Jacob?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I am not here to advise on policy and what direction you take with, with how you choose to act, but that would be a power that you have. You certainly can make that motion, you could second it, you can adopt it, and we will carry it forward.
We certainly don't wanna put the city in any type of, you know, more legal issues than it already has, but we need to be smart about it also, so, I mean, under your advice, I mean, if this is something we can do, and, I think we should. Because if it goes back and forth, it'll be another month, and then another month after that, like you're saying. One change can come back, that's two weeks. We don't like to change, it's another two weeks. There's another three hundred, there's another three hundred, there's another three hundred. I mean, this stuff adds up, and it's, you, you take twenty-one years, it adds up. This is a long time to be doing this. You know, and we're not, we're not gonna run away from this one. This one, we're fighting for the city, and we're fighting for what's right for the city tax dollars here. So we have to have some sort of deadlines on what we're going on, especially when we have, you know, deals that have been agreed upon. And I don't see any language in this that has changed from the original deal that we, we discussed. And that's the problem I'm having right now, I'm disappointed with this. I mean, I think it's a phenomenal deal, not one for the city, but it covers what needed to be covered to get our, us from violating any statutes with our, our city's tax dollars. And, like Jim said, this, I feel like I'm being played, I feel stupid right now. Okay, because I thought this was done, I was happy, I'm done. We don't have to deal with it in the future, we had an end date to this contract, and we had the bills covered up there. Now we're back to square one. But this time, it's gonna have a certain amount of days on it. Right? So how's this motion looked, then? We're gonna make a motion to.
So he made a motion to amend, and you need to amend your second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a second, a motion to amend, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose it, because I just don't, I think we should be still sitting down, but.
Motion passes.
Upsteen.
Staff reports. Mr. Mayor, I got a couple of council updates here. I got good news and I got bad news. So let me start with the bad first, and then we'll go into the good. The bad news is we had made a decision to bring an intern on board to help with the digitizing of files from a hundred years ago, and to, to present, mostly to present. And unfortunately, their intern had an emergency out of the country, and was unable to start, and I just received a message from him this morning, saying that he would not be able to complete this internship. So, speaking of square one, we're back to square one on that. We're gonna try and find another intern possibly, and staff also has decided we're gonna get together and try and figure out, okay, can some of us work some of the day to try and start this process, and, and figure out how we can start getting it underway, and then better determine what the need is gonna be. I think that's the big challenge right now, is starting this process. And then, once it gets started, we can kinda move, you know, at a reasonable pace, where, you know, if things slow down during the winter, we'll have a little extra time, maybe we can start working on more of it. The second bad item is Sims and sixty-five, the thirteen forty-seven property. We ended up losing that deal, it required, you'll, you'll recall at the last council meeting, there was a call for an appraisal on the property. The appraisal company told me that it would take at least four weeks to complete an appraisal on this. The seller was not in agreement with that. The seller decided that they were pulling out and didn't, weren't gonna sell to the city anymore. And I said, well, I find it difficult to believe that anyone wouldn't have an appraisal on this. And, if appraisal takes four weeks, it'll take four weeks for us or anybody else, so. I said, the city would still be potentially interested in this, if the seller isn't able to find another buyer, and to keep us in mind. So, we were able to put an end to the work order for the appraisal, the title commitment, and the survey. We have some legal money into it, but we can, we can utilize that on this property if it comes back around, or potentially other properties. So, to the good news, had an administrator meeting that the county puts on, and various different cities come to that meeting. We kinda talked through some of the challenges that we're looking at, and it's really a good opportunity to learn what some cities are doing to handle whatever challenges they're working on. The topic got to the issue of levy, and the county is going to hopefully be rolling at a nine-point-nine percent levy increase this year, just short of double digits. And, other communities shared their estimated levy increase, and we are by far the lowest. So, kudos to everyone on this board for, for keeping, keeping a tight eye on the budget, and for the department heads for keeping expenses down. And, and so we are so far leading the pack on that, and I think that's just an evidence of good governance, to keep that budget in line. The last thing I wanted to share is the, we got a letter from the League of Minnesota Cities, saying that Senator Calbar, who is a resident of East Bethel, represents the city and state legislature, has been selected as a League of Minnesota Cities legislator of distinction for twenty-twenty-five. The distinction is because of league staff and member city officials appreciate his accessibility and his consultation with them on legislation impacting cities. Specifically, the league appreciates him consistently being available to their staff to better understand complex zoning and land use issues as a member of the state and local government committee. He was intrinsically understood where a legislative proposal was not workable or viable for local governments, and worked closely with league staff on key city issues. League staff appreciates Senator Bar's work on behalf of cities, and looks forward to working with him in the future on issues impacting local units of government. As you know, there was some legislation going through last year that essentially would take away planning and zoning rights for cities. And, and we've been watching that legislation very closely, calling various different legislators, and Senator Calbar was in the middle of that, and so, as well as Representative Peggy Scott. So, we thank them for their hard work on that, and representing the community. And, and of course, they've been instrumental in helping us in the bonding requests, although there wasn't a whole lot of bonding that went through last year. But we'll continue to work with them, and always good to see our legislators getting recognized for their hard work. And we wanna congratulate Senator Bar on this legislator of distinction for twenty-twenty-five. And aside from that, that concludes my comments, unless there are any questions.
No questions?
I have a question not related, if I could.
Sure.
We often ask for minutes to be tabled, to be fixed. We're not paying twice for that, are we?
No. For those minutes that are essentially word verbatim minutes, staff, myself, or someone else will go through, watch the, the video then, and, and kinda type that up, include it, redline it, and include it in the next minutes, so that you can, you can review that, make sure it's what you want, and then adopt it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But in a way, we're still being doubled, don't you, because you're taking you away from something else.
That is true, that part is true, but we're not paying an outside entity additional money.
Yeah.
All right. Council reports.
So my thought is, too, with the minutes part, I had talked to you about that before, Matt, and you said something about Civic Plus. What is that? That's gonna help with minutes, or what?
So Civic Plus is the modules, as we're going through this website update, these are, we have our website through Civic Plus, and they have these additional modules we can buy. One of them, as I understand, I've not seen it in action yet, might be a word verbatim type of a, type of a module that will, you know, essentially, anyone that speaks a word in a microphone, it'll, they'll type it out. We'd probably have to go back and say, you know, Councilmember Smith said this, you know, and kinda, kinda make those additions so that it's clear, not just a run-on type of deal. So, that may be an option going into the future, where the city can essentially have the information they need, make some minor modifications, and then provide our own minutes.
Because I know, to me, it's important, when you read the minutes, there's so many things, if you read it, and it's different, because we're part of it, so we can recall what the meeting is. A year, not even a year, a couple months down the road, somebody looks at it, they read it, and they're going, what the hell are they talking about? That's how I look at it, because it's like it's, even in, like, the last minutes, there's a couple spots in there where it says, "A resident said." Well, if it's a resident, why don't we have their name in there? Because above it and below it, there's a name, but there's two of them that say, "A resident said." You know what I mean? So it's, I don't know, it's important to me, because it's, if anything ever becomes of it, you're gonna look at it, and if something happens to the tape where you can't listen to it, you're kinda screwed on the deal. So that's why I'm kinda wondering about the Civic Plus thing, the verbatim thing, it'd be fantastic.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor and Council, this council has made the decision not to pay for verbatim, which is significantly more than, kind of the summarized version that we get now. We can always pay for verbatim, or when Civic Plus comes in, perhaps we'll have the verbatim, if it works out in that capacity. But that's a, that's just a policy decision, how much you wanna spend.
No, I don't want us to pay for that, that's why I'm talking, when you're talking about the Civic Plus, if there's a program that we could purchase one time, and it does all that, that'd be great. Because then we wouldn't have to deal with it. Because it's important to me anyways, when I read them. That's all I got.
I have something. I attended the local government officials' meeting on July thirtieth, and they went over, it was mostly about recycling programs. And, East Bethel does, was kinda recognized for doing a really good job. The only thing we are missing is organics recycling, and they are talking about, they did talk about grants being available for cities and schools for improving recycling programs. So, I thought, I think the city could consider doing organics. I know Andover, Ham Lake does fly recycling, organic recycling, and they, they did create a new position in Anoka County for waste prevention and reuse. So that's, was kinda interesting. One of the good things they said is, our, the metro area, the Semin County metro, does fifty-nine percent of recycling, forty-two percent for the state, and the nation is at thirty-two percent. So our area is really good. I also wanted to ask about, Anoka County voted on election control. Can you elaborate on what that means for us, what, what their vote meant?
Mr. Mayor and Council, if it's a vote I'm thinking of, it was a storage of the, the iPads that were used for checking people in. Just a storage agreement. Some communities voted against that, but it wasn't the use of iPads, that's where the confusion came from. So I think that's the, the resolution you're probably referring to.
Okay, because everybody was telling me that they voted to take election control away from cities and put it into counties, and I'm like, what does that mean? And I, I didn't really totally understand what that was all about.
We can dig into it, election control, you say?
Yes.
We can dig into it and find out if they took some other, I think it has to do with poll books.
Yeah.
I think that was the hot topic that was being addressed.
So, and then my final thing is, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the seniors. We're still researching, trying to get Bingo going over there. We do still have an issue with the water over there, because we like to serve water, and we put them in pitchers, and it's yellow. And, nobody really wants, it looks like lemonade, I'm like, huh, I'm not drinking that. And we do have a craft and vendor sale scheduled for October twenty-fifth, that's the last Saturday in October. So if there are anybody out there who wants to be a vendor, you can contact me, I will sign you up. Flyers and postings will be coming out shortly. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
Yeah, we got a big meeting tomorrow with Parks and Recreation, going over a lot of the budget stuff for not only this year and next year, so that'll be a fun meeting.
Well, I made out to five different night out parties last week. Wanted to thank the residents that hosted those, and freely invited us. I'd like to thank the fire department for allowing me to ride along with them. And Wednesday, we have a Booster Day meeting, six-thirty. Booster Day meeting, at six-thirty, here at City Hall. That's all I got.
I also went out and made it to five of the parties. One of them had sheriff from the county there, Brad, and it was pretty nice to see him. And, but it's hard to make all the parties in, in three hours. So I was able to make five, and it was, it was fun, it was a good time. That's all I have.
Make motion adjourned.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all's favor?
Aye.